The planning commission to order, let's start off with the roll call.
Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Tanelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sokla.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
All right, good. All right, the next item on the agenda is the public comment section and we use it here to bring up any items that are not on the agenda. Sometimes somebody brings up something that we put off later, or brings something to our attention that we might want to look into. So we open up a public hearing for items that are on the agenda. If there's anyone here to talk about something that's not on the agenda, go ahead and come up front. I'll open the public hearing. And I don't see anybody running to the front, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that item. And sometimes it affords somebody an opportunity to talk about something else. Next, we have the approval of minutes from January twenty fifth, planning commission meeting. All those who are there, please. All right, so any comments on anything on the minutes? Yeah, one clarification, something I said, it's on page three.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, "Note that the solution to this problem would allow residents to top trees, which is poor for their health." I didn't think they are referred back to the people, but to the trees, so poor for tree health, right?
Mm-hmm.
So just refers to people.
Um, where on the, where on page three is that?
Uh, it's, uh, third way down, it works. The first paragraph is this chair Lane said, and then the next to last sentence in that paragraph, "Note that the solution to this problem would be allowing residents to top trees, which is poor for the tree health." All right? Just in case anybody wants to know what's there or if you're referring to it.
Yep.
All right, any other, any other comments on the minutes? All right, so I have a new motion to accept this at the end.
Make a motion.
With the revision.
The second?
Move the second.
Yes.
Move the second with the revision. All those in favor say aye. Aye, abstaining.
Me.
Okay. For all.
Thank you.
All right. All right, good. So the next item is our, on the public hearing segment, and just so we give you a framework of how we approach these. What we do is we start each item with an update from staff, an overview from staff on the item. Then we open up the public hearing and we start with the applicant themselves, and then anyone else who wants to speak. And then we close the public hearing and bring it back for discussion and action that's appropriate with the commission. So that's the framework for the, for the evening, for all the items. All right, with that, then we'll go to item four A, which was continued from a meeting some time ago, I guess. Uh, this is a heritage tree removal at Seventy Stern. Uh, I remember it well, so let's go ahead with the staff update.
Thank you, Chair. The request before you tonight is for the removal of three Deodars cedar heritage trees, number thirty five, thirty six, and thirty seven at Seventy Stern Lane. The item was originally presented at the July twenty seventh, twenty sixteen, planning commission meeting, of which you have the minutes as attachment number two. The commission directed the applicant to consider a tree replacement plan that incorporated evergreen trees, and to provide scientific data to support the reconsideration of this request. Since then, the applicant has sent root, stem, and leaf samples from the tree in for pathology testing, and the lab was unable to rule out the possibility of a biotic or abiotic disorder in the tree. The applicant is now proposing to replace these three non-native trees with one ninety-six inch box coast live oak tree, a native evergreen species. Public notices were sent out to all properties within a five hundred foot radius of the site, and staff has not received any questions or concerns regarding this hearing. Staff is recommending the approval of this heritage tree removal permit since the existing trees are non-native, are not thriving, and are drought stressed. The replacement with a coast live oak would provide much more screening from the public right of way and shade for the property. I'm more than happy to answer any questions at this time. Our town arborist, Sally, has also reviewed the plans, prepared a memo, and is here to answer any tree-specific questions.
Okay. Any, any questions with staff? All right, good, then I'll open up for public hearing, and the applicant would like to come forward? Or representative on the field? Or anybody on the audit, I don't know. All right.
Good evening, Commissioners. I think Dory covered it pretty well. Um, yeah, last time we spoke, it's been quite a while.
Yeah.
Since January. Um, but the main takeaway that I had from that meeting was just reevaluating the design based off of an evergreen solution, which, you know, this, we feel like is, is very applicable to the site. There's a existing oak woodland along the south and east edge of the property, and we feel like wrapping that along the front with a new oak seems like a really good solution. So, um, I think your comments were really valid, and the client's happy with this idea too, so we hopefully, you guys feel the same way?
Good. Particularly in fall, they'll be very happy with the idea.
What's that?
Particularly in fall, they'll be very happy with the idea.
Yes, exactly.
All right, any questions? Any questions? All right, no questions? All right, thank you. All right, then anyone else to speak on this item?
Hi, dear Chair, I'm, I'm Tong Lo, I'm, I submitted a appeal for the time limit for forty-six Almond Row Avenue.
Wait, your item will be later.
Oh, that, that would be.
Oh, it's later.
Yeah, well, that's better.
That's all right. I, I thought I'd get something inside on trees too. All right, very good. Anyone else to speak on this item, about the trees, a tree removal? All right? Then none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion action appropriate.
I love that we're doing a live oak instead of the mucos, and that you did the testing, and, um, disease could be ruled out. So, seems there's sufficient reason to remove the trees.
I agree, I would have said the same thing.
Okay, go ahead. Does that sound like you have that thing?
I mean, ninety-six inch box tree is a pretty large tree. In many cases, it's already a heritage tree, it'd be fifteen inches in diameter. So, I mean, and we're trying to promote oak trees in town, so if you, if your decision is to let them be removed, I think this is a good choice.
Okay, good.
Not very impressed with the selection of ninety-six, uh, ninety-six inch box. And, and I did have one question. Am I correct to assume that the oak's gonna go where the three trees were being removed?
Yeah, it's almost in the same exact spot. It's just forward to that, a little bit closer to the street, maybe not like up three feet.
No, because you were really impressed with how flexible you were and, and I think the house looks great too.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Really nice place to feel too.
Yeah. It came out really well, you know, very well. Uh, yeah, I would, I would agree with all those comments. The other thing I would say, we've already looked for the gas lines, make sure we're not putting anything near a gas line, correct? Just the back of my head.
Um, I think, we haven't looked at that exactly, but that's definitely a consideration. I mean, either way, we'll shift it around to make it work.
All right, yeah, I think PG needs a couple of things, you don't want to have to mow down another few years or so.
I think I was actually here at that meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, so just.
Yeah, no, I definitely remember that one pretty well.
Okay, good. So that would be something you want to check into.
Definitely.
All right, great, so need a motion? And the board of the.
I move that the planning commission finds that the proposed removal of three heritage trees at Seventy Stern Lane in Atherton would not be contrary to the purpose intended in the original plan. For the reasons outlined in the staff report, the commission approved the tree removal.
I'll second the motion.
Move the second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, none, passes five o. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for staying on the case too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so the item, the next item, four B, is about the school master plan for mental school. I understand that Dave asked that to be continued again, right?
That's correct, they requested a continuance until the March.
Okay, so need a motion to move that to March B?
So move.
Move, second, to continue to March. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, none, five votes, so we're ready to go. You're just a big chance. Okay, item four C, this is four twenty-six Almond Row. Uh, request to repeal the decision to build the office for the construction time limits, and we'll hear from the staff first.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Um, the item before you is an appeal of the construction time limit penalty at forty-six Almond Row. Um, the building permit was issued for a new residence, which includes about ten thousand square feet of habitable space and a little over twelve hundred square feet of non-habitable space for new residents with basement, poolhouse, carport, associated grading and landscaping improvements. And that permit was issued on August thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. The town has a construction time limit ordinance that's been in place, um, I think since two thousand six, yes, since two thousand six. That was established in response to community concerns over the length of some of the construction projects we had in town. Um, so the corresponding time limit for this project would be three years, based on the size of the development. The applicant indicates that circumstances outside of his control delayed completion of the project. He indicates that his architect interior designer had to travel out of the country on several occasions to care for a family member, as well as sewer contractor was on leave for four weeks at a critical point of the construction. He's also provided documentation on ninety-one rainout days and noted the holidays and Saturdays in which they are unable to work. The code does include a provision if the owner believes that failure to meet the time limit was caused by circumstances beyond the owner's control, they may file a written statement to the building official. Um, the building official does have the ability to waive the penalty if they feel that there's extraordinary circumstances. In this case, the building official did not waive the penalty. And then the next step would be the appeal to planning commission, which is where we're at today. Um, and again, the planning commission is able to, to grant it if they're able to find circumstances outside the control delayed the project. While it's unfortunate that the applicant's architect interior designer was out of the country, um, other accommodations could have been made for substitute designer or, you know, communicating abroad to keep this project moving forward. Uh, the three-year timeline for constructing a new single-family home should be more than adequate with diligent progress and a capable development team. Um, I've asked the question to the Chair, and thank you for giving us the heads up. We did a little search into the system on, um, projects that were under construction at the same timeline as this development, and that's the timeline you have before you, I also have an extra copy in the back. Um, there's twenty-six new residences that were under construction during that same time period that were able to comply with the regulations. So I have in one column the date issued, the date final, the address, and a brief description so you can understand. There's a wide range of the magnitude of projects. Um, I think here we have a five thousand square foot residence up to a fifteen thousand square foot residence. So there's definitely that range. And then on the back side are projects that have exceeded the time limit, and these are all the ones that have exceeded it since, um, two thousand six. So, um, we have five that have exceeded it and paid the penalty. The one is on that, um, lower column is the one before us tonight, but the five on the top, you did hear the appeal of eighteen Ralston at a previous meeting, and that appeal was not granted. And then on the very last section is projects that have not yet completed and may submit an appeal. And then the item that's before you tonight is the last item. Um, Mike Greenley, the deputy building official, is also here this evening, if you have any questions. We'd be happy to try to answer this for you now.
All right, any questions with staff? Mike, thank you. How many?
Okay.
Do your meter run?
I don't know.
All right. Any, any? All right, then I'll go ahead and open the hearing. You're on. Good, yeah, you're ready to go.
Okay, yeah, so I heard of the, the statement from Lisa. Right, yeah, so, um, basically the, the, the most of the major problems as stated over there is the, um, is the leave from my major architect and my interior designer, which, so this year, I think, because her daddy is dying, in the past three years period, so every summer she took a leave for one month, one month at least, right, to take care of her daddy. And this year, her daddy was actually lost thirty pounds in, uh, in one month, so she's out, and his daddy is actually dying. And also, her mom, her mom actually lost her vision, so her mom cannot take care of her daddy, so, and then she has to fly back on the emergency and, uh, and then keep extending her stay. So as I attached her, um, air tickets and all those things, because all, those ones are, um, unpredictable situations, because she thought she might only be there for like two weeks, or to take care of family, then come back, and then she extended her stay. So we have no chance of planning ahead to get another secondary architect or, uh, interior designer to fill in those jobs. And, uh, and, uh, last year's summer was, was critical for me to finish all the major interior part, so that is a major reason for the delay. Yeah, and, uh, as, as the second part, I, I think at the final of the, of the project, we need to change the sewer line. So I already hired a contractor, it's called Able, yeah, this Able on the constructions. So, and, uh, I give them contract, on the contract, they said they are going to take care of the permit. And, but after that, they, they don't take any action for almost four weeks. Then I was told the, the major project manager had a newborn, uh, newborn child, so he took a leave of four weeks. So, uh, that actually is, is another critical delay. So the, beyond that, we also documented like, almost like ninety-one rainy days for the past, uh, past three years. So I think for many of the framing works and, uh, many of the works, and those crews, they schedule their work on, on the calendar. So if this is like, if, if there's like more, more than two days or three days, rainy days, and they would not schedule the work for the, uh, for the whole week. Yeah, so, uh, that is also a major concern.
Okay. Any questions? I've got a couple of questions. Uh, are you the project manager?
Yeah, I'm the owner.
Okay, all right. Who is the project manager?
Uh, yeah, I, I'm actually the owner, I'm the, the project manager at the, uh, later stages of, for last year.
Okay, good. All right, it doesn't, I, I bet by the project, it doesn't look done yet, even though it's already signed off, right? There's still a lot of work to be done on the outside, it looks like.
Yeah, the, on the outside, we only have the, the front gate, yeah, uh, and, uh, only have the front gate and the fountain, so.
And the landscaping and all that.
Yeah, all the, it's only because during the last, the few weeks, they're just pouring. Yeah, so the landscapers, they, as I said, if they see like more than two days of rainy days, and they don't even schedule for the whole week.
Okay.
Yeah.
A couple of things, all right, the ninety-one days, uh, everybody had the ninety-one days, so all the people on this list have the same problem.
Right.
And the ninety-one days probably includes the hundred, some part of the hundred and eighteen days that you went over, correct?
Hmm.
Probably does.
Only, yeah, only, I, I think only probably three or, three or four days, uh, it's in, in that, uh, a hundred to twenty days. Because last year, uh, the last four months only have, uh, the smaller run amount.
When did you say, when did the project fall behind schedule?
Um, it, it fall, fall behind schedule, I, I think, uh, the, the, the project's ending date is, um, the starting date is from August thirtieth, the two thousand thirteen, to August thirtieth, two thousand.
I know, but during the course of those three years, when did your schedule fall behind?
Yeah, fall behind, I, I think I officially took over the project management, I think, uh, January two thousand sixteen, from the contractor. So, because I, I, you know, I feel very unhappy about the, the project delay, so.
So it was already behind schedule, uh, year two, right?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Over there.
All right, so, so who chose the contractor?
The, the, yeah, the contractor is, uh, Rockwood Construction.
No, who, who chose them?
Oh, I chose them.
Okay.
Me and my wife, I chose them.
Okay, all right, so, um, so the other question I would have is, once you took over the project, uh, what did you do to get back on schedule?
Oh, yeah, so basically, I was on the project almost, uh, every day, at least, uh, six hours per day.
I don't know, but did you add staff or anything to get caught up?
Oh, yeah, I, I added lots of stuffs, and, uh, actually, I'm the person following up on all the subcontractors, right?
Okay.
Who get things completed, directed, completed.
Okay, all right, that's all I, you know, that's all I had. Other questions, have any other questions?
No.
All right, thank you, thank you. Anyone here else here to talk on the item? Go ahead. Come on. Are you Lars?
Hi, I'm Christopher Pota.
Hi, Commissioner.
We live at thirty-five Adam Way, which is behind the, uh, forty-six Almond Row House. And we're directly behind thirty-eight Almond Row, which is number three on the second page of your list here. And, uh, sort of surprised to hear that they're also completed. Uh, both of these properties seem to be, you know, unfinished to me. My main reason in coming tonight is to try to understand what's been going on. Uh, this is the first time you heard that there's a three-year time limit on building projects. It's nothing that we looked into or know about. Um, this has been an ongoing project in our neighborhood quite a while. We've had these two houses, we've had, uh, several going in across the street near us. All brand-new construction and also significantly modeling. So it's been quite a zoo for more than ten years.
Wow.
And I would just speak to the, uh, three-year time limit. I encourage you to keep that as a rule, and maybe to increase the penalties so that people take it more seriously. Um, and also, uh, we put up with a lot of noise, and particularly this project here at forty-six Almond Row. There seems to be a lot of tile cutting going on. It seems to have been something that went on for a year, a year and a half, maybe two years. And to the point, we went to the point that we were wondering if they were running a project, you know, there and elsewhere. Somebody was using that as, uh, well, we got the tile cutter here, let's, uh, do the work here and put it on whatever house we needed on. Maybe they subcontracted to other people, maybe without his knowledge, I don't know. But, uh, it's a pretty obnoxious noise, it's very, very noisy from where we were sitting, and, uh, went on many hours of each day. And I pity the guys who were running the machine and were right next to it or within a few, few feet. Uh, I hope they had good air protection. That's all I've got to say, any questions?
All right, any questions? Thank you very much, thanks for coming out too. Uh, any other, anyone else here to talk on the item? Or do you have something else to add?
Yeah, just one thing, yeah, because, yeah, I'm sorry for the noise to the neighbors.
Okay.
As I heard the neighbor was concerned, uh, like, we are cutting the stones for the other project. But I can assure you, that is absolut, absolutely not, not, not the case, so.
Okay.
And, uh, in this project, we have lots of very detailed stonework, and, um, as many people, as, as you've been in the, um, the planning commission, and they told me, this is the, one of the most detailed work, they have everything. So basically, we have precast stone trails all over the building, and, uh, we have the, uh, stone pavements, uh, yeah, for all the backyard and even for the front gate, so we do have lots of stonework, and that is also, uh, another reason of this project gets delayed. Because, um, frankly, many of the trims and the details design has been revised by my architect, uh, Gruh, like, uh, three times. So, uh, after the stone guy put on the detailed trims, and, uh, and then the architect come in, take a look, and, uh, and she found out the stone guy sometimes did not cut the stones at, at the exact detail that she required, so then she, uh, asked me to redo some of the stonework, so, so, um, for the, for the main gate and for, for the trading, I actually ended up, like, do some of the parts like three times to, to, to get it right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I'm probably for the room.
Actually, I've got questions to say.
Yeah, I should close that.
Any, any other pu- public comment? Then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for, uh, discussion action appropriate.
Actually, I had a couple of questions for staff, et cetera. There's this letter, which I'm surprised at, talks about a hundred and seventy-four Saturdays that they can't work in Atherton, which no one can work on Saturdays in Atherton, so that alone is completely irrelevant. Uh, rainout days, that's, you know, that depends on the work, whether it's inside or outside. Those don't appear to be in forty holidays, no one works on those. So, tho- those are completely irrelevant as it relates to requesting anything that would be repaid. This, this timeline isn't applicable, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Come in.
Hi.
All right, any questions with staff? All right, go ahead with your comments.
Okay, I'll go again. So, so I was on general plan when we actually implemented and went through this entire review of this, these timelines. It came up originally so that, I, I won't call this a rogue project, but I will say that projects like this that went unmanaged or that, that the owners chose to, to take extra time to, to make the cuts that they were choosing, or that they had subcontractors that weren't meeting their specific, you know, goals, uh, that we put a control on this so that this didn't happen. I was actually in favor of much higher fines than what are in here, because I think it's a huge nuisance to the neighbors. There's no reason that, that, and we're builders too, or that's a portion of our business, that building a home like this should take thirty-six months. Or in this case, thirty-six months plus a hundred and thirty-five days.
Yeah, plus, plus not quite done.
Well, and I was surprised, driving by, looking at it, that it was wrong. So what I would say is I totally encourage this denial, and, and from my standpoint, I, I think it sends a terrible message if we don't deny this. So, that's, that would be my point.
And I would just add, um, that I echo everything Randy just said, particularly about the Saturdays, holidays, and rainout days. Irrelevant to this situation at hand. Additionally, um, as sorry as I am to have heard of your architect's and interior designer's, um, parents' medical challenges and traveling back and forth to Turkey, um, you even said that this would be going on for a number of summers. So the knowledge of his poor health was well-known to your architect, and, um, I'm certain, I think she anticipated that, um, she would have to fly back home, and that her father's ill health would imminently mean his unfortunate demise. So I don't see that at all as a valid reason for this project, for issues occurring on the project that were outside of your control. And I think the same could be said for the underground construction company and the gentleman who took the paternity leave. Um, I'm sure there were nine months prior to the birth of the child, where this gentleman knew that he might be taking some time off. So, um, had the general, and he, when you took over, um, the project, had conversations with both of these parties? Um, I think you could have well in advance identified their absences from the project as a very distinct possibility and made, um, alternate arrangements.
Yeah, can I add the one?
No, we're, oh, we're closed right now. Let's go ahead, let's go ahead, comment.
I echo what everyone else has said from the evidence. I think it would be justified to deny this request.
Yeah, you know, the, I've had situations at project management, and the role of the project manager is to make sure the man, the project's managed, which means there are certain criteria for the, for the successful outcome of a project, and in this case, time is one of the ones that was a lower priority. That good architecture was a priority, uh, getting that particular architect was a priority, getting that particular sewage person was a priority, uh, redoing the tile was a priority, but the timeline clearly wasn't. Uh, and, uh, so the, the, I refer to this, uh, this, uh, ordinance as a good neighbor ordinance. It's designed to be a, a clear statement that to create the neighborhood that we want, we all participate in trying to make that happen. And that means noise can only last for so long, can't happen on weekends, it, it, it's done within a time period that's even stretched beyond reasonable. I think, I've been in part of projects that were like sixty homes in two, in less than two years. I mean, we're talking, so there are big projects that are doing multiple homes and multiple, you know, all different types of things are finished much faster than this. So there was a lot of examples, and we have them right here, of a lot of projects that were done properly. We have a lot of examples, not a lot of examples, we have at least five examples of, of projects that for whatever reason went off, went off longer, and each one of them was fined, right? So the objective of that, uh, of that, uh, ordinance is not a penalty, it's an incentive to, everybody's a good neighbor. Now, if somebody goes over the, over the line and there is some extenuating circumstances, like this, the town caused the late delay or something else, it makes sense. We had one, one exception where somebody was approved, and then they did not start construction for a month, it rained for a month. And so there was no noise to the neighborhood, there was no, uh, there was no impact on the neighborhood. So that was the one exception that we ever made. So, so with that, I'm, I'm totally comfortable with this being enforced to send a statement to all people responsible for, uh, developing in the community that that time limit is the time limit. And that, and particularly, the other thing I would say to the staff is that I would, I would hope that in the future, when we sign off on a project, it really is done, because the, the outside noise associated with gardening and laying concrete for a driveway and, and all the other finishing things should be considered as part of the project. So, um, I, I wasn't, I wasn't too happy it wasn't done when I went there.
I would just add one more thing. It seems to me that, um, staff was being extraordinarily generous in writing off, the project is done on December twenty-seven.
Right.
Only a few days short of a thousand dollar per day penalty going into effect.
Right, that would have been a factor. Yeah, I appreciate the fact that that was a gift, a, an annual gift. Also, just for the record, also, we have a, a, a letter that was given to us by Lars Hurlitz, who was a thirty-eight, uh, Holland and, uh, menu, and who kind of who says, I don't know the ETLs, but I'm simply impressed in town. and who says, I don't know the ETLs, but I'm simply impressed in town regulations are enforced equally as all, uh, uh, for all. As I think you know, we also want the honor for your limit, in our case, good reasons, including facing unforeseen challenges because we were making our house LED, uh, uh, lead compliant. Uh, we were told that no special substances are considered, and so we paid our penalty. I would not be happy finding out that others got exceptions. Uh, thanks for your good work for our town, from Laura Surratt. All right, so that's just to make sure everybody knew that we had that, received that. So we're ready for action, uh, motion or action or whatever else would be appropriate to, to the commission?
I need that we deny the appeal request.
All right, let's use the wording in the, in the other side here.
I heard the planning commission denied ETL as the delays to the construction project at forty-six Almond Droll Avenue were not outside of control.
So, so moved and seconded, certain on, all right, all those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye, opposed, now passed this time, yes, ma'am?
But, but I think we, uh, you should at least consider the, the number one day, twenty days, right?
We, we considered, we considered all those things and whether, now you have how long to appeal to the, the, to the town?
Ten days.
Ten days, you have ten days to appeal to the, to the town, uh, council. All right? Thank you. All right? Item, next item is item four D, which, uh, we thought in the big done legal assistance for this one. All right, so we, uh, we have amendments to the second dwelling unit ordinance and for those of you who read the pack, which I'm sure we all did, uh, this is a, this is keeping us compliant with, uh, regulations from the state level. And, uh, staff has done a really nice job of trying to amend it so that we can keep within the framework of the town as well as be compliant. So with that, I'll turn it over to staff for their inter-
Thank you Chair. So tonight you are being asked to consider amendments to chapter seventeen point five two, second dwelling unit ordinance of the town's municipal code. You are requested to review these amendments and provide a recommendation to the city council for the adoption of such changes. Um, just a real brief summary of where these amendments have derived from and what they are and what they mean to the town. Um, there are some recent state, California state legislation that, uh, regarding secondary dwelling units. In generally speaking, these laws have modified jurisdictions' abilities to regulate secondary dwelling units, which are now actually, per new state re- uh, legislation, are referred to as accessory dwelling units. So I'll use accessory dwelling units as the term, um, just from this point forward for consistency with the state law. So these changes have streamlined the approval process for the units. They have effectively removed barriers for their construction and really, I, um, have shown the state's commitment to providing more affordable housing units throughout the state of California. A summary of what these mandated state requirement changes are and how they would affect the town's second, excuse me, accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Um, first, the terminology, now referring to them as ADUs or accessory dwelling units versus secondary dwelling units. The second change has to do with the review process. Now, um, ADUs need to be ministerially approved, meaning there's no subjective criteria that the town can apply if the proposed accessory dwelling unit hits three criteria. And they're up here on the screen and they're in your staff report as well, but effectively if they are proposed to be contained within an existing single-family house, so if somebody wants to carve out a section of their house and call it a secondary dwelling unit, if that space has independent exterior access to the property and has sufficient setbacks for fire safety purposes as determined by the building code, they can do that by right. That same approach would also be applicable for existing legal detached buildings. That, and in Atherton, there are several of those, that could be a detached garage, a detached poolhouse, a detached guest house. The same criteria, same process, if those unit, if that new unit met those criteria, uh, it would need to be approved by right. There are some changes in the parking requirements, uh, that have loosened up the parking requirements. You can still require parking for a new ADU. However, you can't if that ADU is located, uh, within half a mile of a public transit stop or one block from a car share pickup location, which we don't have any here in the town, but we do have public transit stops. Um, given the size of the properties in Atherton, if you do a buffer map centered off the transit stop, you're really not hitting that many properties, so there's not a ton of properties that would become affected by that.
A lot along Middlefield Road, probably.
Middlefield Road, El Camino Real, and there is a stop along Alameda, De los Pogos as well. Same transit stop, that is. And of course, the Caltrans station here would constitute a transit stop, so all the properties, um, on the other side of the tracks and probably hit a few here along Fair Oaks as well. You can continue to allow parking, um, and it can not be allowed as tandem unless there are specific findings made. Frankly, when we have been applying the second, secondary, what was our secondary dwelling unit, now our ADU ordinance, parking has never been, um, an issue that has been brought up, that at least I'm aware of. Lots are typically large enough to accommodate a space somewhere on the property to be designated as onsite parking because it does not need to be covered. Um, an additional change mandated by the state is that there is no setback requirement in a situation where an existing garage is proposed to be converted to an ADU. An ADU can also now be created above an existing garage, even if that garage only has a five-foot setback. Our interpretation of that is if that garage is a detached structure, our exist- existing accessory building and structure height regulations would preclude that from happening. However, in a situation where a garage is attached to a main residence and for whatever the reason may be, has a legal non-conforming setback of five feet, that may be a different situation. There's some occupancy regulations that have also changed. It now allows jurisdictions to require that one of the units, whether that be the main resident or the ADU, be occupied by the property owner of the site. And it also prohibits short-term rentals, um, to be less than thirty days. The town's existing ordinance already requires that the unit be owner occupied. Um, we also have a requirement for those buildings that are not used as ADUs, but say as a poolhouse or a guest house, that limits the restriction. So this is all in, pretty much in line with what the town is already doing. Um, in terms of some timing changes, uh, it's a state requirement now that the local jurisdiction ordinance has to specify that an AD, any ADU application must be approved or denied within a hundred and twenty days. Um, again, not an issue for the town, we are pretty expeditious in the processing of these types of applications. The additional requirement has to do with density. The state does not allow you now to count an ADU against the maximum density of site. Not really an issue here in Atherton since we do not have any multifamily zoning districts and our lots again are quite large and you wouldn't hit that excess density with the addition of one unit. There are some other requirements, um, that are more, I would call it building code based, um, not, versus a, a real change in the land use perspective. Uh, the units do not need to provide fire sprinklers if they're not required for the main residence. There's also some reduction in, um, the fees and other mandates as it relates to the utility connections for these units. So what this means for the town, we have prepared a revised draft ordinance that complies with the minimum requirements as mandated by the state of California. If Atherton were not to adopt an ordinance that complies with these minimum standards, it would be considered, our ordinance would be considered null and void and would revert to the state's less restrictive requirements. In terms of the staff analysis on the impact of the town as it relates to all of these changes, we found really one of the require, new requirements that may have the, the, the largest potential to have an impact, um, to the community and that has to do, um, with the ministerial review approval. Dory, if you want to go back a slide please, or two. So in this situation, if you have a detached guest house or poolhouse, which there are dozens throughout the town, that were approved legally by right, constructed by right, um, and with those detached buildings, the minimum setbacks for those structures are ten feet from a rear property line, ten feet from a side property line, in the most general of cases, if you have an interior lawn and no other special circumstances around. If that poolhouse or guest house meets those three criteria as shown on this slide, where if the building was legal, if that poolhouse or guest house has independent exterior access and has sufficient setbacks for fire safety purposes, a person can now by right propose to convert that to the use of an accessory dwelling unit. We did put some information in your staff report that if that was found to warrant further evaluation, there is a suggestion to consider looking at the town's existing accessory building and structure ordinance. Um, at this point, staff has not proposed those changes. Again, what we have before you tonight is simply amendments to what we have as our secondary dwelling unit ordinance to a new accessory dwelling unit ordinance that complies with the minimum state requirements. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission or the public may have.
Let's go ahead and open up public comment and then we'll bring you back to, unless there's any question to the staff at this point. Let's go ahead and open up public comment, I'll go ahead and open up public comment on this item, if there's anyone here to talk on this item. Nobody's rushing up? All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public comment section and, uh, we'll bring you back to the commission for discussion and action appropriate. Go ahead.
So I, actually one of my questions, having read it, you, you touched on it a little bit about someone who has an existing structure, whose permitted build that could be converted to an accessory structure. Does that, how many different directions can that go? It seems like that opens up a lot of different discussion that we're maybe not in one night able to jump in and totally digest.
Right, and so the biggest change is the use of that building now versus having, uh, this, for example, your relative comes to town for a few days over this ski week break and they stay in your poolhouse. That is allowable by existing town ordinance, because you cannot occupy that building for more than thirty days. Under this new state legislation, if you come into the town and say, I want to change my poolhouse to the use of an accessory dwelling unit, you now then could do so if you meet those criteria, meaning you could rent that building out, you could not rent it out for profit, you could still have somebody occupy it for more than thirty days.
Okay, but what about then, you've changed it to an accessory building that's considered its own, does that give somebody more floor area ratio to be able to duplicate that somewhere else and set or replace that building?
The way, no, uh, the way that we have proposed the, the ordinance is to not allow, there's a current, uh, let me back up. There's a current, um, opportunity for the construction of new accessory dwelling units that allow you to exempt your ADU square footage from your overall maximum allowable for your site. And, and really, um, in, in my experiences here in Atherton have been the predominant basis of why folks are putting these, well now we'll call them ADUs, because they get to exempt their square footage of that, of that space up to twelve hundred square feet and push that square footage to the main residence or other buildings on the site. With the conversion, the way that the ordinance is written, so if you took that poolhouse or guest house that's already there or carved out a part of your house, you would not get to then take that square footage away and apply it to, say, in addition to the house or ma- or a new accessory building.
So were, somebody who's already maxed out their FAR that they claim that this is an ADU? I'm just throwing a hike in that.
They-
Or they could develop that, or they could build that on their site somewhere else up to twelve hundred feet?
So, yeah, for new, for the construction of a new accessory dwelling unit, so you want to build a new building and/or add on to your house to have it be utilized as an ADU, you would still need to follow all of our existing requirements that have greater setbacks from property lines, that require parking space, that require a separate exit. But if you wanted to convert existing space, whether it's in your main house or in any of your outbuildings, you would not be allowed that same opportunity for square footage exemption.
So let me pick up on that because, all right, so, so let's say I, I have a home that I partitioned off into two units now, you know, your garage or whatever, and has its own access, so that's two units. I have a poolhouse and I decided to convert that. And I have enough property where before I did the poolhouse conversion, I go ahead and, uh, apply for an ADU new building, uh, and I decided to convert the poolhouse later, so that then I'd go from one unit on the property to four.
You, you can only have one accessory dwelling unit per lot, the way that the ordinance is crafted, so that would, that would, yes. Uh, that would be in section seventeen point five two point oh four oh A.
Whoa.
Page two, page two, top of the page.
That helps me more. All right, A.
But, on, to that same question, so for, what I'm, what I'm hoping is we can avoid this becoming a, you know, a hell raiser for all of us on the planning commission where this, like I said, we're now, instead of seeing things like we're seeing now with the trees and, you know, maybe, you know, wall heights and things like that, now all of a sudden we get a hundred of these because everybody's confused. So, so a new accession, so if somebody's maxed out their FAR, but they don't have an ADU on their site, can they add an ADU to the site that is then not applicable to the current floor area ratio guidelines?
If they took some of their existing space and want to now call it an ADU. So if they have a situation where, in that scenario, they have a main residence and a poolhouse and the combined square footage, square footages of those buildings have them exceed their FAR, they could by right convert that poolhouse to an ADU if that poolhouse was legally constructed, if it has independent exterior access and if it has sufficient setbacks for fire safety purposes.
Okay, so, so where I was going, different direction, if they don't have any, so many of these places don't have any. They, like, everybody maxes out their home itself rather than having an accessory structure. Can the accessory structure then be added to the site as an ADU?
They could, they could add a new ADU in a new building and it could be detached from the main residence and it could be exempt from the floor area, but it would need to meet our, all the setbacks.
So, I mean-
This could be kind of-
Right.
But that is a dis- that is a discussion topic. We added that floor area exemption in a way to incentivize the construction of second dwelling units. Now that, well, now that they're allowed by right in any poolhouse in town, do we still need that exemption? So that is an area that you can discuss and provide direction, we can come back at a future meeting. But any new accessory dwelling unit needs to be generally in the main building area, can't be in the back corner. Has to be in the main building area to get the exemption, any new construction.
That would be up to twelve hundred square feet exempted?
Right, right. But that was something we were talking about, is do we really need to keep the exemption of floor area in there?
As a separate issue, not part of this, but also to come back and say, okay, now that we have this as a change in direction, do we come back and take that other one away?
Correct.
Because, because now it's, we don't need that incentive?
We don't need that incentive anymore. Right, and, and it's really been used as a bump in floor area, not people wanting little rental units. Um, but, so I want to make sure everybody's clear, right? If you, today you wanted to build a brand-new accessory building and you want to call it accessory dwelling unit, it's got to be generally in your main building area. If tomorrow you want to build a poolhouse, you can build it in the back corner, ten feet off property line. Next month you can convert it to an accessory dwelling unit, but all of that counts into floor area.
But when you say in the main building area, I mean, you've got that whole footprint, right, that whole, you know, setback?
Right, the fifty, sixty?
You're saying, you're just saying in those setbacks?
Yes.
Is where you can have a new accessory dwelling unit that's exempt for floor area. Is where you can have a new accessory dwelling unit that's exempt for floor area. But you can also build a new pool house and then convert it, legally.
Yeah, except that there's only one ADU per site, so you guys choose.
And the pool house counts in the floor area.
Yeah.
And I agree with the whole intent of this to meet the floor pool house. I totally do it. We're one of those towns that probably is the least able to, because of lots, because of the ability that we, we only have twenty-five hundred lots or twenty-eight or whatever it is, right? So, I mean, I do think we have a duty as a community to do that for whatever it might be that would mean those requirements, just not that it creates something that's now a whole brand-new town ward.
Yeah, I mean, there was a lot of concern when we were developing the regulations through the general plan committee and planning commission with that housing element update, that people were very concerned about having rental units ten feet off the property line. We're preempted by state law, we don't have a choice on that anymore.
Right, no, that's decided for us now.
Yeah, I'm a general plan minister, so I came up first here. So I've seen this movie already, that's why I'm just asking, not to dominate.
Right, no. I have a question about the time limit on the rental. Is our maximum time limit allowable thirty days?
If it's not an ADU, you cannot occupy a pool house or a guest house for more than thirty days.
No, what I was thinking about, in this instance, can we, could it be ninety days rather than thirty?
It has to be more than thirty.
More than thirty.
Alright, so we specified more than thirty, but could we say minimum of ninety rather than? So, what I'm saying, so one month could, is a Airbnb length during the summer. Three months isn't.
Right.
So.
Four-term rentals are generally defined as thirty days or less. So you're stepping out of the norm when you do that and it's something I don't usually recommend.
Yeah, okay.
Because if you look at, essentially, that's a big issue across the country right now. What constitutes, do you have a legal right to rent your property?
Yeah.
You pretty much do.
Right.
And if you rent your property, what does that mean? What's the term rent your property for a day?
Right.
A week? And usually, of course, in most jurisdictions have looked at a month as a reasonable period of time to be a minimum.
Okay.
And that's because, you know, there is some neighborhood disruption, moving in, moving out, getting used to their, and do they have kids in high school?
Right, new cars in the neighborhood, yeah.
All that stuff. And so, I mean, I think that the staff is applying what I would call the normal rule.
Okay, well that makes sense. I mean, this is one of those ordinances you don't want to be non-standard because it brings a whole ordinance into question. Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure we asked that. That's the only question I had. Any other questions, Scott? I'm okay, I've read through this a number of times and I'm comfortable with what it lays out. So I personally appreciate staff's work on it, because I know there's a lot of, trying to make sure that we're landing where the community wants us to be as well as where the law is directing us to be, as well as where our will be optimized. So, we want to make sure that we're aware of all those elements of it. So, but I'm comfortable with this. If we want to go ahead with more discussion on it, or prevent that of allowing the community more time to realize it, we could go ahead and continue this to the next meeting or we can go ahead and take an action tonight. Is there a time limit that we're dealing with from the state?
I, well, I'd probably let town council give that, but I think the sooner the better on getting this to the city council for adoption.
Yeah.
Formal adoption for the town.
The town council is another public hearing, so I'm comfortable with wanting the community to have a chance to chime in at least another time. It's going to go there anyway.
Right, two more.
First reading, second.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's good. So, I actually have a couple of questions. So, I don't have an issue with the language. Were there any things that you wanted in here that you guys, as you did this analysis, that you think we should think about differently? Or is there anything that you worry about, because you're the ones that have to process this? And so, I just, again, I'm just trying to streamline it so that, and not knowing that the council will take the time that we will on it, or maybe they're influenced in different ways, that you would like to see in here, because now's the time versus it going up the ladder.
No, I mean, we're comfortable with the version that we have here, the language, the way it reads, for clear implementation and understanding of what it means and how we as staff are going to implement it and how we as staff are going to help explain it to the community.
And then we'll, we'll be dealing with the reality of it as it comes before us, I think.
Yeah, I think the only item is, do we want to keep in that floor area exemption? And that could be something we study going forward, or we can bring something back at your next meeting.
That's separate from this item, though, right?
It could actually be amended, I believe, tonight if you wish to strike it.
See, that's my biggie too. That's the one thing that I'm just not so, I've, if the whole goal is to encourage people to do these, then we shouldn't strike, right?
Yeah, I guess the issue is, when we write a report to the state that shows production, we go through our permit records and we see how many second dwelling units were applied for and then we fill that number in. Going forward, if we take it out, then we need to wait for someone to come in for a true accessory dwelling unit conversion to be able to check this.
So the file numbers go without, if we get it out.
It's unknown at this point, how many people are going to do this.
The other, the other potential point to consider about keeping it in is in the scenario that Lisa was describing, where somebody comes in with a pool house today and then decides tomorrow, actually I want to convert that to an ADU. They can do that. And then you've got the situation that could have the potential impact given the lesser setbacks for this building. If you keep it in, it may actually encourage people who really want to use a second dwelling, who really want to have the actual use of an ADU on their property to do that with, and build it and locate it within those greater setbacks or within the main residence, because they get that extra incentive of floor area exemption.
That's a good point, too.
So, architecture, the second this gets passed, you guys are going to seem like crazy, because it just gives people the chance.
We've been getting it pretty, yeah.
Already, they're going to see, right? They're going to see that this is a way that somebody says, hey, I'd like to have more square footage than they ever have. So, we should just know that going in, that's going to happen, period.
Yeah. And that would also review, it gets to be an issue, you can review it later on, too.
Well, and we still, generally there's a tree issue, generally there's a variety of things that are going to be in play for, so, unless somebody has a site that's just completely bald.
Right. Okay, so I'm, you ready for a motion sometime? I can move this one, please, while, very.
Yeah, sure.
I move the finding mission recommended city council through the amendments to chapter seventeen point five two, second dwelling units, from now on called ADUs of the Town Municipal Code based on the findings for the reasons as outlined in the staff report.
Second.
Moving second, if all of you favor, any discussion on the motion? All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Fantastic, and that was a good staff work, very good staff work.
Yes, thank you.
Very thorough. Good framing, too. I'm sure there was a better job than the legislative did on it. Alright, item five, as commissioners report. Anybody?
CCAC kind of wrapped up their business with the city center.
You're all gone, huh?
Well, for now, unless any design changes are proposed, I need to come back to us, so. It's moving ahead to council. So we finished that two weeks ago, with some final touches on some landscaping and things like that, so. After, what, three years, I guess it's been?
Good job.
Finally were able to wrap it up.
I think that video that you did has to be out and around going into this, this next, that the proposal is going to be voted on. That video that you did has to be in front of everybody, because it's, you know, all you have to do is ask somebody after you see that video, would you work in that place? And that video is just, is so telling, it's just totally telling.
I think actually we need to update it, because we've lost a trailer since then.
What?
Bless me.
Yeah, I mean, that was, I mean, I knew it was bad, but that would show me how bad it was. It was like forced in the backstage at that nightclub. It was totally bad. Alright, so.
I actually have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know, are any of us on the tree committee?
Well, both are.
Okay, I'm getting phone calls from people, architects, asking about it and I said I'm not on it, I didn't know who was, saying that they're concerned about the impacts on these trees. And I don't know, given that it's an open item, if it's okay for us to discuss it or if you'd rather not discuss it tonight and just put it on for another time.
We'd rather not.
Yeah, let's put it on for another time.
Trust me, you would rather, you would rather raise it as an issue for our future agenda because, because it doesn't go up.
Well, that's why I'm asking. Yeah, you guys can come out with something soon, right?
Yeah, so, we've, the tree committee has concluded their efforts on evaluating existing tree ordinance in the tree preservation guidelines and specifications document. And so staff's taking all of that and working with the city manager's office who will coordinate with the town council on how we will approach our next step on our study session or.
Great, super cool. Any other commissioners report? Okay, great, alright, staff reports.
Nothing to add, just was going to make comment on the tree committee, so.
Oh, you're welcome. Alright, item seven, takes as always, so much time to do this one. Move, always have a motion to adjourn. Move, respected, all of you say aye. Aye.